First, I'll move to order, meeting to order. Rule call, cool here.
Wire here.
Hazlitt.
Approval meeting minutes from September eighteenth, September twenty-second, and October second.
Go ahead.
Hazlitt will make a motion to approve the meeting minutes.
Wire, cool second.
Motion by Hazlitt, second by Wire, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, citizen input? None? No business, none, new business? September twenty twenty-five financial statements, payroll amount of one hundred four thousand four ninety-six twenty-eight. General discussions of one oh four, four twenty-three twenty-nine. And the court treasurers reports, if there's no questions, I can take those all as one.
Wire, move to approve.
Hazlitt will second.
Motion by Wire, second by Hazlitt to approve the September financial statements, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. New business on call pay for DPW.
Ah, this came through public. Didn't it come through public?
Somebody said they wanted to go back to you, but I think it had to come here because of the timing.
It really hasn't been done, Mark.
I want you to know where you are.
Siri, you don't come home?
In Wisconsin.
I don't have her, for uh.
You got a dude.
A dude?
He's got a dude.
Um, yeah, I thought this was going to be word Smith to have what we discussed in.
So did I. This is what Chad may talk about.
Yep. Yeah, I think it kind of, it was accomplished. I mean, it makes sense to me. Basically, you're gonna get eight hours of overtime pay for, for a weekend, per weekend. Right. Yeah. Fifty-two weeks out of you. So it doesn't matter if it starts Thursday night, Friday morning, or if you get work Fridays, doesn't matter.
And it's all your own.
Right, and it's all your own. So I'll move to approve. I guess, what is this? Is this an importance change?
The policy.
I'll change.
For the handbook.
Yeah.
Handbook.
Alright. I will move to approve the on-call pay as written in the amendment to the handbook.
Hazlitt will second.
Clarification.
Yes, I had a question too.
Yeah, because it's overtime compensation.
Yep.
Section that gets changed, right? Or is the on-call pay also being changed? The red line I'm seeing here is in the overtime compensation wording. Right?
It, not necessarily.
Okay.
Um, it's written per weekend instead of per day. So technically, it did change the, the way it's written, but it's still the same hours.
Right, no, that I get.
It's just eight hours at time and a half, maybe in the end of the shift of work week until the beginning of the next Monday.
But don't we have to fix the second paragraph too, that says on-call scheduling begins Memorial Day, National Labor Day, does it give two weeks? Or do I have to get struck, struck?
Alright, yep.
So read, make sure that second paragraph is exactly what you want it to be. I would like to see this in a form of a resolution, because that's what we've kind of been missing every time we do updates in the handbook, we have no dates, no resolutions.
It would seem that we have to approve this to create the resolution to follow through with it, like, yeah, it appears that.
We can approve this with a resolution due, but I think this was more about making sure that we had everything in the budget correctly too.
Yes.
We had to take this down.
That it was, yeah. So we'll have to modify that second paragraph.
Do you want to amend your approval to say that it should still come back in a resolution as a final document for approval, for full council? Is this even on for tonight?
No, it's not on for tonight.
I didn't think it.
Okay, good.
I thought it was gonna go back to public works.
And I did too.
But because this meeting was first.
Yeah.
Then it's gonna bounce, bounce back to public works at the beginning of the month.
Okay.
And then we'll push your right to console and step back through here.
Correct, that's fine.
Okay.
I mean, we've, we've looked at it. Know what the issue is.
Right, and the money's already put into budget.
Into the budget, correct on. That we've already put the budget the correct way, based on this year round.
Yep.
Yeah, so that it can get moved to go back to public works. Versus council.
So do you want to alter your motion to send it back to public works?
Yeah, we'll send it back to public works. I think we should really strike out the last sentence of the first paragraph and eliminate, or modify the second sentence of the second paragraph to include year round. So either delete Memorial Day, Holiday, Labor Day. And just make that fifty-two weeks.
Yeah, we can modify it.
Just modify it.
It seems redundant if you were to have it in both places.
Did you just talk about the time, did you keep it up to thirty-eight minutes? I know they were, they're asking about forty-five minutes, or they do want to change that, or we're changing others, three ones, thirty minutes, is that what we're discussing?
We can change that part too, I got a bunch of stuff on there like here, so.
Okay.
Little bit.
What, did you just say long about the budget?
Oh, I had, I had knocked it down to half times.
No, we don't back up to thirteen something.
Is it up to that, did I?
We mean half time, because when we first talked about it.
Half a year? Originally, it was Memorial for Labor Day. Yeah.
Right, but we corrected that last meeting.
Did you, okay, then I must have fixed it.
And we did the math.
Yeah, you should. Okay.
Right, then, so I'm using a fictitious number, but you said you had to react to the highest.
Yeah, I'll make sure.
Alright.
Change this.
I will amend my motion, my motion, not my emotion, to financially approve this in concept, uh, sending it back to public works for final clarification of the language, and then on the console.
Hazlitt will second.
With the assumption that the, the math is right, so we'll just also double check that. I don't know, we're probably gonna do a little bumping, like, uh, those other additional columns, yeah.
Okay, motion by Wire, second by Hazlitt, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Twenty twenty-five forty-nine borrowing resolution, I'd like a motion to move that down below six A.
Wire, move to reposition five new business, part C, to below six, part A.
Cool, second that, all those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. General budget discussions. What's left, Lana?
I'm lost, though. Alright, so I do have a spreadsheet on here, um.
Show it to me.
The gap one, right.
So, the first one is on the capital. One of the things that has been done for quite some time is that the payment on the capital, loan that we took out, capital improvements, has been, been deducted from the capital revenues. So what that means is that what we have accumulating revenues is less by the share of a hundred and three dollars, a hundred and three, I keep saying that. Hundred and three thousand nine hundred. So what that means is in order to be able to accomplish all the capital items we have here, we either need to borrow more, which I highlighted that, that borrowing would go to three fifteen versus the two eleven. Or, uh, the way to handle it is in the property taxes. Right now, it says two hu- two, on the second page, the top line, two hundred and seventy thousand seven twenty. This is where we would need to add that into the property taxes, or the levy, okay? So by doing that, of course, it, it changes things as far as taxes. But, uh, one of the things to this here, this sheet, is giving you scenarios. I wanna make sure we had this in the very mouth, that if we add the full hundred and three thousand nine hundred, that was being deducted from the capital funds for the debt, it, it's interesting how this all works, but, um, to use the full capital, it goes down, your, our taxes will go down sixty-nine dollars and eighty-four cents based on the projected tax profit price. If we leave it the same, okay? If we add half of the hundred and three nine, um, into the taxes, it will still go down thirty-two dollars and ninety-seven cents on the projected tax rate. But using the full into the tax levy, the debt service levy, hundred and three, there'll be a change. This is based on a property assessed at two hundred and fifty thousand, okay? So again, you use the tax rate, um, I didn't figure it smart to do a hundred, who's not too many houses, so that's a hundred. They would change the taxes for the year at three dollars and eighty-nine cents. And that's based on the assessment of taxes that are out, so it doesn't change much by doing that. Now, I don't know what the county taxes, I don't know any of those things yet, so, but for the city. Yeah, if we do that, so.
I recognize what control we can control.
So with that, probably with reassessment, all those different things, a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar house, it, it goes up minimal for it. So, or we have to borrow more, I guess those are the options. It's, the way that they were doing it prior, it was just coming, floating around, coming out of general fund, whatever it was, and it, it wasn't ever really coming out of the capital way it was. We were still projecting the same things, but we can't, so it was just not done right, so.
And this is something that Ellers identified, or the auditors identified that should be corrected.
Yep, and that was one of the things in the, um, FMP that, that they said that we really need to, to, instead of using those costs because of the capital expenses that are coming up all the time, that's less than less that we get to use towards what we come in revenue. So that's where we have to use that levy in order to achieve what we need to, and, you know, the last, last year, we didn't do it, but we need to, now, I mean, we'll have to do stuff for twenty-five two in the resolution, but if we don't, if we don't, I have, we'll have to borrow more.
This is paying for debt we have now, but it has nothing to do with the debt we have listed that's gonna be dropping off in twenty-eight, twenty-nine.
I don't know if that one drops off, I don't, I really didn't even look at that, I was so blown away.
But that's not on the debt schedule?
Not the debt schedule, but it was being, uh, used, the revenues were being used to pay down the debt. The revenues of capital were being used, so the computer aid or whatever it was was being used for what was.
It's like it's all going in the general budget, and we're just pointing it out, paying debt out of it rather than levying for it, having it earmarked for a specific purpose.
Right. So it's caught, but again, it's not that we can't do what we're doing, I'm just saying that the resolution will not be.
Do we have a clue what that debt was even for, what the project even was, or when can we pay off?
I can look.
And it's just a whole.
It's actually a yearly payment.
She's a payment.
But I'll look, I mean, every year we'll have to make that decision too, I mean, it's not like this is gonna be the same thing, I mean, but next year, we're gonna have more in capital expenses, so.
And I think you would wanna make sure you declare what your capital's gonna be in.
Absolutely, that's why I'm, I'm just baffled.
Yeah, I'm telling you, I was too, I, this is what I did all day today. Because I was just couldn't believe that, I'm like, oh no, this is not good.
It's another one of those upcoming things that we've been doing.
My God, are they gonna be done on earth in surprises?
Never.
I hope so.
I got twelve of them this year, I'm sorry.
It's just a thing that I'm baffled at, is we have this debt schedule, we know when our debts are gonna be dropping off, I don't know where this one oh three is coming from.
It's in the debt schedule, it's just that he, the way it was set up is that that part was coming out of all our capital revenue. So computer aid, that, that's the way it was set up, so that shorted any other.
This stuff, things.
Yeah, the other things that were set up for capital, they were paying down the debt with the revenues they were getting each year, instead of using it into the levy.
And we had enough, we had enough fund balance, it never was an issue.
No.
In a year where you're tight.
Now we're going to start, and that's why the budget's up.
Yeah, which we're avoiding.
And that's exactly in that financial management plan, they want us to try to start levying more of the, like in this case, the debt, because that's going to help create, I mean, if that's, that's a hundred and three thousand, that could be used for something else.
Yep.
So, I mean, granted, we can still borrow, but do we want to borrow more when we can do it what I think is the best way to do it?
Correct.
Or whatever you guys think is fine, but I just want you to know that we gotta make one ch- a change.
I don't wanna have to borrow more than we need just because interest rates are still a little crazy.
Yes.
So borrow what we need, knowing in twenty-seven, we're absolutely, twenty-eight, we might still be okay, but twenty-seven, for sure, we're gonna have to borrow for Van Guren, that's gonna be, uh. And like I said, I want, hopefully, the rates aren't so crazy then.
And trust me, I sent this all to, um, to Casey too, and we went through it, and he, he said you're right, you know, so. Um, I think this one comes off. I don't know, let's see, I did have a spreadsheet. I have a couple of spreadsheets here. This one was for. This one comes off in twenty, twenty-eight exactly.
I have one coming on, yeah, in twenty-eight, second one in twenty-nine, and a third one in twenty-thirty. So that's why I was curious where the whole one oh three is in this real world.
Yeah, how's the payment for, paying for which one? These are all capital banks, so.
It's probably blended, isn't it, anger again.
So the payment there, one of the particular interests is right there.
Maybe, maybe such as to fix it, and have it right going forward, and not have this hanging along, and this will.
Yeah, this is all, but this is for this one, so it's a hundred and three nine, next year, it'll be a hundred and two four. But this one comes off in.
Doesn't matter.
Yeah, this comes off in twenty-eight.
Dead levy, so it doesn't.
One more comes off, yeah.
So we just have to.
Yeah, that's the first one that comes off in twenty-eight.
Right, and we have to be smart with the other things that we're doing, so, yeah. But.
We're not really refinancing this.
No.
When we get into the, I, I know, I'm trying to write down my, my order, just so I know what I'm saying.
Okay. But we've, um, done a lot of money, but.
So we're not going up to, are we going up to borrow this in that thirteen hundred that we're gonna talk about a little bit? Thirteen million, or one thou- one million, whatever the number is, whatever one, one million three hundred? That's gonna be a part of that?
Um, for twenty-six, we will have to borrow three hu- three hundred and fifty thousand, and for twenty-five, seven hundred and eighty-seven. So we're, we're still covered with the way that the draw, the loan is working, that's not gonna be an issue, because it's a draw up to this and then a draw up to that. So that is not gonna cause us any issues, it's just however we wanna do it. Do we wanna borrow more at the five point five five percent, or without, looks like much issues? You know, again, I don't know the rest.
Well, this is gonna drop off in two years. So why do we have to put it into a new, a new loan?
We're not putting in a new loan.
We're just gonna levy for it.
Cruise levy for it.
So taking.
I'm not refinancing a darn thing, it's got two point nine seven, so.
I mean, this is gonna drop off, we only got a couple things left.
No, not refinancing.
So it's a levy, levy only change is what we're talking about.
Yeah, and that, and that's what.
Thank you, that's what we're gonna, we're trying to get straight.
This is the sheet that kinda gives you the projected again, and we went through the statement of taxes, we went through everything to try to get as much information to you guys tonight, so you can.
So why wouldn't we just use the full amount?
That's what they've been telling us to do, is levy the full amount.
They, they didn't realize that, the thing with that part, doing it on the, the capital revenue, knowing all our projects are coming up, is not probably the best.
Well, just humor me though, full use of the one oh three, and then you get full one oh three into the levy.
Okay, so there's, the taxes will go down this year if, if, if we leave it the way it is.
Okay.
If we, we do half the hundred and three nine, it will go down sixty, thirty-two dollars. Again, estimate based on, we have the projection, which is pretty close. If we use the whole hundred and three into the levy.
Yep.
It, the change will be estimated at three dollars and eighty-nine cents on a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar assessment, yeah.
Means we don't have to deal with it again.
And we're done in two years and tails.
And then next year, we'll weigh it up, or we're gonna have to, I, I don't see that it's gonna be an issue next year either, because it's a little outside.
Is this what Ellers prefers we do?
Yes.
Okay.
And I do.
Okay, and, and that's fine, I just.
No, it does matter, I.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, but yes, Ellers, he right away, and I said, what if we do half, because I was just panicky over.
Like they're gonna raise it.
Yeah, and then when he did that, I'm like, oh, well, that's not so bad.
Again, not knowing what the county's gonna do and different things like that, I can't control that, but, uh, it's. And again, two fifty, so if it's three fif- you know, it's gonna be ten hours or whatever, so.
We're talking pennies.
Yeah. I was very happy about that, and that was a better way to present this.
Correct.
Penny and a half.
Then the other thing, um.
Oh.
If we will, yeah.
Yeah, you have to do that one.
Are you done with that one?
Uh, yeah, with the debt part, yes.
Okay. Any questions? Or anything? Motion to levy the full debt amount of one oh three nine hundred.
Wire, cool second.
Motion by Cool, second by Wire, all those in favor say aye.
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 Do we need to do rule call on that?
Yes, well.
Not here, by council.
Not here, not here, not here, because it's a recommendation for the next budget.
Okay, so.
So that fixes that problem.
This is a problem, but not a terrible problem, I guess. So the sheet that we have here that says at the top with the full, uh, debt increase, and it really doesn't matter if we went this way or not, I'm just doing it this way, because it shows on there. We are off at this point based on the levy, and, and basically our levy, and then plus the adds with the library and the whatever. I put a little asterisk there, that doesn't mean you have to go that route, but we need to lower, uh, somebody's levy twenty-three hundred dollars and four, twenty, yeah, two thousand three hundred and forty-one dollars.
Oh my God, that's terrible.
So I know, uh, the general fund lowered theirs, so I don't know if we have any more to go. So we will have to make an adjustment somehow to that, and the, the debt doesn't come into play to that, so.
Hmm.
So.
Yeah, she just needs to lower it, so.
I, I just put aster- I mean, whatever you guys wanna do, but that's why I put the asterisk, we need to lower twenty-three forty-one, if you guys decide on where you'd like to do that, but that is a definite, we have to do that.
Do you have a preference where we should take it?
Where the little asterisk says.
Well, I don't know where else to take it, that's the thing, I can't take it from, from.
No, I'm, I'm in agreement there.
I mean, definitely not, can't do it from the fire, can't do it with library, can't, you don't have enough in our C D, so, fortunately. It's not a lot, so at least that's good news.
And knowing as many projects that is there, is there, maybe bids will come in cheaper. And afford some, what's the way there?
Or we just take his, we opt at twenty thousand, we'll just drop it down to twenty-three, and if he does get better bids on the other projects.
We could.
Oh, on the perk main.
On the main.
Yeah.
On the perk main, because we don't, jumped it up twenty thousand, so just drop it by twenty-three hundred, and then once he goes out for bids for all those other things, hopefully, we don't have any problems with that, or there goes, two thousand three hundred dollars.
I would move to do that to balance the budget, we can always take contingency funds if it need be.
If needed, yep.
At a later, at a later date. I mean, that was kind of an arbitrary number to boost it by twenty grand.
Based on the numbers that he's had, right, it's definitely needed there.
Hopefully, some of that stuff is getting repaired, and there's less to be made in, in the same level. Charlie, you had your hand up?
No, we should probably explain that, though, I guess. So. Um, Gabe, where's the shortfall, and yours is the, because you have a number, you understood it?
Yeah.
No questions then? Okay.
Okay. But thank you.
Sorry.
And obviously, if there's progr- prog- or programs or, should say maintenance that is above and beyond.
Yeah.
That comes back, and we address it at that time, it's not a problem either.
I mean, we've been doing that to fifteen grand a year, everything sold.
Yeah, everything.
We're not always doing that, but this will balance.
So I'm gonna, budget on the revenue.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, I will, I will so motion that you take the twenty three forty one from.
For maintenance for.
Maintenance line item.
From the maintenance line item in two twenty five.
Yeah.
Give me my motion.
Wait a little second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries.
Okay, so the after means nothing then?
Yeah, that's just the way it was, yeah, we still have to change it to twenty three, it doesn't matter what we levy, yeah, I just was wanting to give you the whole, so you saw.
It matters.
You can roll good things there.
Um, the last, I got one more.
Yeah.
Um, on the uh general for the police, it was calculated at.
Thirty weeks and twenty two weeks.
Yeah, so it was calculated.
What's thirty week, you women, that's right, thirty weeks and twenty two weeks.
Uh, the, the, the tier system, the patrol rate, it was calculated.
Right.
Yeah. Eight months and four months.
So you do have it calculated according to the way the union contract is for everybody, all the changes, but.
Yes. Thank you.
Alright, I'm just, I'm sorry, I'm just going back to the as is and the full here. Cause here, as is, even though we're still lowering it, why, why is the levy estimate different?
Because it's still the twenty three forty one, it's the, what changes it is the debt. So we have four oh seven and we have five ten, we can adjust our left.
Oh, cause this is the debt that we just talked about.
We can adjust it either way.
Right, you remember to show. Got it, got the debt in that there, that's the difference in the, cause it's the after sign.
Okay. So then the resolution is fine.
Okay, got it.
Is there something else?
No, I'm sorry.
Is it the other, anything else on the general budget that anyone?
I guess that was just the question.
No, no.
The judge had it calculated.
That was the question.
Right. So it was, right, so no after necessary.
Nope. Just wanted to clarify.
Hmm.
Mustn't be also something, I'm good.
I don't. Nothing over there? Any questions from the floor, or as far as the budget goes, before we move on?
I'm good.
Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to the moved item, the twenty twenty five forty nine borrowing resolution. And that's in the package, correct?
Yeah, and then the proposal, um, of capital bank. That's, uh, had the, the best program I've been.
Puts rates out there, rolling.
Well, he, he feels it's probably gonna be a little less when he, when he finally saw, but, um, five and a half.
When you blow.
Right now it's at five point five.
Yeah, which they come down.
Fed stock. Fed stock and low lowering, yeah.
So I'm gonna try to go through the end of the month, but I can't, I can't go much lower than that, so I'm gonna work on it for a little rate, but that's the proposal on it. Um, when we started, when I started this whole process with that, is that, um, we had the, and it says up to the draw, so nine, up to nine hundred, whatever.
Right.
And the reason why it was that is because, um, we had to use the ARCA money that, that was, and, and, yeah, that we had for another project,
That was.
but that got moved to twenty six, and I had to use it this year, so it got moved to every, so it lowered it a little bit, which is fine, it, it all works out, but I just want you to know why that was changed, that changed. Um, but this, this terms of this work out so well, so if we know exactly, we take the draw, we don't have to just wing it, you know, whatever it is that we have drawn, and so.
I didn't even realize that that ARCA money was in there set aside for two oh three, so once it got denied, we still had the money in there, we could've done it, when it was cheaper. But, fingers crossed we get it this year, you know, I got three good letters.
So anyways, that's the reason for it, but the plan, the other program with, that's listed there, it was the same rate, but they didn't have the terms that we needed on it, and Ellers had told me that this, it's a good program for people that have a poor credit rating, but it's not, it's, they won't, they won't.
Well, we have a good credit.
Yeah, they don't wanna, they don't wanna be flexible with uh terms, they can't, they have to be consistent, so that's where, this is why.
So as usual, we ask this every time we'll offer debt, which hasn't been met on, if we have to pay it off early, it's running test.
Oh, no, it says under the N A, I made sure that.
Where's it saying?
On the.
That's what I was looking for.
On the list, it says gear prepayment N A, no loan fees, no anything, so they waived all those origination things, so.
Good, I like it, and it's fixed.
Yeah, so I'll try to get the rate down, but.
Good.
Okay. Any motion for that?
I'll motion to refer to council, resolution number twenty twenty five dash forty nine, authorizing the issuance of debt to fund twenty twenty five and twenty twenty six fund expenses.
I'll send it out. Well, that's okay, anything we're gonna get, and get too much on it anyway tonight.
Give uh. Motion by wired, second by outside.
Correct.
All's. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Rolling task list.
Is it in the.
Not in the packet.
Do.
It's, it's online. Nope, that's just the calendar.
There's, I was gonna say, I thought it was a calendar. Well, it, we have a bunch of things on there that were, once everything is done, I think, uh, Chad, didn't you guys just go through and uh look at your bylaws again?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we never approved that, and I still don't know how much is in there that we have to wait for the union contract over.
Right.
But if you've got a new one, just give us the new one.
As soon as I get done with the rendition, so you guys know what to take and all of this.
Sure, no, that's fine, that, that's fine, I just know that's on the task list, along with the handbook and that thing cleaned up, and that's why I wanna make sure we.
Yeah.
Should be able to get it, get it to you by, hopefully next week, that way you guys can review it by next meeting.
Not a problem.
Yeah.
Not a problem. We got plenty of things to do, there's no shortage, but I appreciate, I appreciate you guys, you guys still staying on top of that.
Right.
Yeah.
That way it's to you guys, and you guys can review it when you need to.
Catcher time to review is appreciated, yeah.
Yes.
And you wanna say anything about the yesterday's deal?
Yeah, so we, we needed to discuss in the last meeting, we needed to preorder basically the light pack and the stair chair to get locked in on the twenty five rates of paying the extra three to four percent.
Yep.
For twenty six. Um, so the light pack quote with service plan up to twenty thirty came to, I think it was one eighteen, which was under what we.
Expected.
Expected to. Unfortunately, the stair chairs went up in price and with the service plan up to twenty thirty came to like thirty eight, so about twelve.
Thirty nine seven.
Yeah, so about twelve thousand dollars over what we expected.
Yeah.
Uh, so we were able to get that locked in and shifted around, so we're getting those prices, we don't take delivery and no payment needs to be made until May of next year.
So what they had, they still had seventy eight hundred dollars if they were applying to it on fund balance, and then he's also been applied fat money. So it, it's a wash.
So it's a net zero.
It is a net zero, yeah, and we did everything we need.
It's a net zero.
Perfect.
Perb margin of interest, if we keep making interest, then it should be whatever difference there is, oh boy.
Well, some good news for once.
Yeah.
It was actually, thanks for.
Yep.
Being on top of it and let us know, it was, it was in the afternoon, I think you texted me and said.
Yeah.
We gotta know by tonight, it's like, oh boy.
Yeah, and they're like, nope, that's it, like, okay.
No.
That's the benefit of having the mayor and the council president sitting right next to each other, that he comes over, you gotta do something.
Right. And then, uh, we are, we've got one quote for the garage doors replacement, and we're waiting on overhead door to get another quote.
Okay. Yeah, it, it'll, it'll be a wash.
The council. Initiate review of calendar year insurance renewal policies.
I have that next week.
That's on the calendar. That's when?
Um, the quote, yeah, yeah, finally got everything into them with the changes, um, utilities and all of that.
For next, next one? Yeah, that next one.
So we have more changes to it?
Um, there was just some equipment and stuff that they had to have done, so.
So berries, oh, yes, happy his, everybody else is probably saying.
Yeah, yes, yeah, yeah, everything's good, so I reached out to them today, and they said they've got it working and should have it to us maybe this week, but for sure next week.
So we have more days, so.
Gabe, there's always a little problem.
It took, it took a while just to get everybody to make sure, I wanna make sure everybody's got their equipment right, everything's good, so we don't have any issues and, you know, so it definitely takes a while, so. But yes, we'll have that and hopefully no surprises.
Did you wanna say something, or are you just enjoying time with council, we never get visitors? We like visitors.
Well, you know, I, I like to listen to what's going on, um, I wanted to mention, you might look and see if there's any grants available for your parks though, cause sometimes there's some grants that are available. We. Maybe you guys do that already?
We love grants.
But I just wanted to mention that. And also, um, we figured your budgets, I don't know when your payroll is, but there's twenty seven payrolls in next year, so in case you need to shift your budget, just in case.
Well, we will, oh yeah.
So, um, I have a little situation I wanted to ask about, some of you might have heard about it already, um.
Well, let me just stop you real quick, so this is finance, so did you have any questions specifically for finance?
No.
Or did you wanna talk about it at public, or at public comment at the council?
Yes.
That's where you wanna go, okay, I just didn't want you to say it, then say it all over again.
It'll be. It'll be.
No, I, I wanna listen to the finance.
Good, we like company, we appreciate it.
You missed two months worth of special, you need two.
I don't think you, yeah.
Two or two plus months of special.
I'm waiting to add two months to my own special.
Until nine, nine. Hey, you still live on Taylor, don't you?
Mm-hmm.
That's getting done next year.
I heard that, is it resurfacing of the follow up?
We'll, we'll, and all the lights for that one, and then the year.
Yeah, the one with that one, George Collin, so.
And also taking pictures, neighbors come home.
What are you doing?
Yeah, take a motion to adjourn that. We're taking a washing to a German.
Do you know who did, um?
We already corrected it.
You did? Yay!
Mr. Wyatt let me know and I was, had to listen to the tape, that's why.
I wrote it on my minutes and that's why I knew who it was too.
I had it in my notes, but my notes weren't at work.
Alright, so it is corrected already?
Yep.
Beautiful, thank you. Anything else?
Wyatt moved to approve the October second minutes. October second.
Motion by Wyatt, second by Austin Cool, to approve the minutes of October second, all in favor?
Alright.
Vote. Motion carried. Citizen input, I know Mark is here for Illuminus. Hello, Ms. Fitzgerald.
I'd like to speak too, so whatever.
I would love to speak right now.
Awesome, uh, well, a couple things. I brought you guys a little book, so, yeah.
Thank you.
You know.
Yep, that's my question.
Um, and so I've been trying to go around to different communities. Got a few if you guys want to, I'm sure, over there. Um, and just give people a little update about what's been going on at the Capitol.
Okay.
Um, we passed the budget and I know it was at a meeting then, I said I'll come back and kind of let you know what's been going on. So what I put together is just a few of the highlights of the big ticket items in the budget that you might be interested in, or maybe your constituents might ask you about, things that are of concern. So, the top, um, I know we've talked a lot, um, Mayor Quimby and I have both shared concerns about road funding. Um, so A-Rip and L-Rip are back in the budget, um, I don't know if you guys, I don't think you've ever done A-Rip, L-Rip?
Yeah, we have. In fact, I'm, yeah.
Yeah.
And I'm on the committee.
Oh, good. That's helpful, because we have a lot of people ask questions about that, so now it's someone I can ask.
I've already been to the meetings.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Um, and then the other one we've been highlighting for folks is the local projects program. Non-state entity that's doing some building. And a, um, a town hall they want to build. The library in Lake Mills has contacted me about that, so there's a variety of different kinds of building that could go into there. Those projects, um, the grant is open right now, so if there's anything in Waterloo that you think might qualify for that, you can let my office know. My staff has been just sending out information and then we can help if you need help.
I have a list.
What's it?
I already have a list.
Excellent, you have to be shovel-ready and have the mon, some of the money already there, so, um, contact my office if you need.
We've been dealing with our city engineer as well, but I'll gladly contact your office.
Yes, if you need any, I've written a couple letters of support for people, if you need anything, let me know.
Thank you.
Um, the stuff in the middle there is just the big-ticket items, that if someone has a question about, you'd be like, yeah, there was this for schools and the UW got a lot of money to do some building projects, childcare. Um, the big-ticket item there is the 1.5 billion in, there is the 1.5 billion in tax relief that'll come in your tax returns next year. Um, the brackets changed a little bit and some retirement income is now not taxable in the state as well. Social Security's never been taxable, so we're talking about other retirement income. Um, at the bottom there, next steps. Um, some of the fallout from, um, the federal budget bill is hitting the state now, so we've been trying to figure out what that means for the state, how are we going to fund it? Some of that, um, is big-ticket items, millions of dollars we're talking about, so that's kind of where we're at now, that's still a little bit in the unknown, um, and now that we're shut down, that's a little bit more unknown. But we keep working on that. Mills Nelson is a big one, um, that's been a place where we're trying to get some compromise going. Um, the Democrats have introduced some labor bills, um, everyone's been introducing K-12 education bills. Local government, we did a whole bunch last week on, um, some housing bills. This week we did some criminal justice and a little extra EMS, um, reimbursement for training for EMS. Um, and there was one of the bills I, when I talked to people in the EMS world, um, not getting reimbursement, oh, but don't do a transport. It's a really expensive thing for. Right, I mean, it's all, it's very high, high-ticket item, and so that bill is out and about. So hopefully those will go through, we've got some extra stuff for local government. Um, there are hundreds of bills in the state Capitol. So if you ever have a question about one, you know, just be like, I, I heard this was happening, um, most of them, uh, don't, don't go anywhere. But, uh, we'll, we'll fight for whatever is important for people, out of the ones that are there. And then in the back, uh, I always think it's interesting, um, the governor releases, right, this massive wish list budget, and that makes the news, and then there's the actual budget that gets passed. So this is just a comparison, if, if you're curious or someone else is curious, we hear one thing sometimes in the news and then it's like, well, what actually got spent on that? Um, so some of those, um, I just, I just pulled some of the big ones out of the budget. Again, if you have any questions, you can certainly let me know. And then I just included for everyone, just one of my little door cards that were, um, kind of knocking some doors. It's got my contact info, little bit about what we've been doing in the Capitol, so, um, feel free, let me know if there's ever anything I can help with, uh, any further questions, um, anyone we can direct you to at the state. That's what our office is for, so.
Your assistant is very helpful.
Yeah, she is very good. Right, I have a full-time person who's in my office all the time, answers the phone, takes care of all of that kind of stuff.
Do you want to announce when you're going to be at the library?
Um, I can't remember the date at all, the, do you have it?
The 23rd?
October 23rd.
Kelly bring that up.
I think it's, I think that does sound right.
Thursday or a Wednesday?
That's a.
I think it's actually supposed to be a Monday.
Or, we're all, look at us, we're like, we're like, I don't know, I am going to be back in town at the library, so, yes.
That he'll tell you.
Yeah. Yeah.
Uh, it is Wednesday, the 29th.
Oh, we're not even close. There you go, Wednesday, the 29th, we made it to 29.
There you go, Wednesday, the 29th, we made it 29.
So if you come, trick or treat.
You are in Fort Atkinson on the 23rd, so you weren't completely.
That's what it is. Fort Atkinson, the 23rd, Waterloo on the 29th.
And that was first on the list, that's why.
Certainly, wel, welcome to come, it's just open time, people to show up, ask questions. Share, but nothing planned, so. Alright.
Perfect, thank you.
Let me know if you guys have any questions. Thank you very much.
And I have another meeting I have to get to, so.
I'm gonna cut out, but it was great being here and you guys as well, questions, let me know. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, meeting summary since last council, special finance, Charlie.
Um, special finance, we have a meeting down at the fire department, their personnel down there to discuss their budget. On the 13th and the 16th, obviously, we're still dealing with, uh, budget items, trying to tie up loose ends, um, all the things underneath the cushions and the, we have a resolution coming before the council or later on, I'm gonna suggest.
Uh, utilities, Richard.
We had a very brief meeting.
I saw that, it was like seven minutes?
Close to that.
Something like that.
The only thing that we were gonna do was ports and pay, but they didn't have it ready at the time.
I see that.
So that's coming here and then some security cameras at the, um, offices.
Okay. Alright, back to Charlie, special finance, 10:13. Oh, did you do them all at once?
Yep.
6:13 and 16, alright, we got them all covered, very good. Alright, consent agenda items are in your packet, if there's any questions, anything you wanna see, otherwise, if you're also familiar.
Cummings will make that motion to approve the consent agenda items as listed.
Austin, 2nd.
Motion by Cummings, second by Austin Cool to approve the consent agenda items, all in favor?
Aye.
Vote. Motion carried. Uh, renovations boards, committees and commissions, finance, Charlie.
I'll make a motion to accept the October, be it September, right?
No, I don't, why did that? I'm sorry.
September, 2025 financial statements, payroll amount of 104,496 dollars and 28 cents. General disbursements of 104,423 dollars and 29 cents. And the court treasurers report on file clerk's office.
Cummings, 2nd.
Motion by Cool, second by Charlie Cool, second by Cummings to approve the financial statements, roll call.
Cummings, yes.
Austin Cool, yes. Charles Cool, yes.
Hi.
Yes, yes. There we go, alright.
Thomas, yes. Where, yes.
Hassan, yes.
Getting involved.
Motion carried. Alright, water and light, there is nothing to actually approve for borrowing. Did it get added now?
That, that, that's right here.
Okay, so that's why I got a new packet today. Okay, okay. Well, we'll look at yours and, huh? Did not fill that.
That's why I was looking for that and you were taking.
Yep.
I didn't realize that was even in here.
There we go. No, I'm talking water and light.
No, you're talking, you, you have to follow the agenda.
Jesus, did we get a completely different agenda?
And the borrowing resolution after I asked you to?
Okey-dokey, hon.
Okey-dokey. Didn't realize I was out there trying to write this already.
Alright, my bad. 2024-49, borrowing resolution from finance, Charlie.
This is the borrowing resolution for going off the debt for projects that are being funded in 2025 and some as well in 2026. The best rate from the lender capital bank. So I will motion to approve the borrowing resolution 2025, uh, 49.
Wyatt will second.
Motion by Charlie Cool, second by Wyatt to approve 2025-49 borrowing resolution, roll call.
Cummings, yes.
Austin Cool, yes. Charles Cool, yes.
Griffin, yes.
Thomas, yes.
Wyatt, yes.
Hassan, yes.
Motion carried. Water and light, these are both just informational, is that what you're referring to, Richard, that they didn't have ports and pay yet?
Correct.
Okay. I like the pictures. Or anybody that didn't see it, all the, the taping's done and, yeah, it was nice, pretty nice.
There's certainly been a lot of activity on Henry Street.
Well, you live there, so you definitely see it. It's, it's. Alright, there's no questions, we'll move on. Parks, resolutions, we have three of them. These were, uh, multiple bids that, um, they went out for, for the 2025 projects. Anything you want to say about them, Kate?
If anybody has any questions.
Um, the way you wanna kinda go through it, is everything within your budget, anything over or something under or all balanced?
The, um, bathroom vanity is, uh, is below budget and the overall abatement and concrete coating for the lower pavilion is about four grand over budget. So, in the end, it'll even out. I just hope most likely, I mean, it's both in the Capitol projects anyways.
Yep.
The, you can see there, the 24-9 by Krieger is, uh, 5,100 under budget that we had and then the advanced health, or the One Call 365 and Wisconsin Epoxy, um, came out to be, um, like it was 4,600. So it'll, it'll balance out the end.
Good. Alright.
This is all in the budget?
Yep. Yeah, we had talked about this a while ago. I don't know, we, we didn't approve any, but I think it was in your parks minutes.
It was in the parks, yes.
Yeah, your parks minutes, the resolutions and their, the request for bids, I know, I read all of them.
The bathroom vanity, one, the bid went out to seven different companies. The lower pavilion abatement was to nine and the concrete flooring, can't believe there's 16 different companies in the Madison, Milwaukee area that do that.
The bathroom vanities, can you humor me which one is that? Is that the inside, is it the outside for all of them?
It's covering the lower pavilion, upper pavilion and outdoor bathrooms. It will include, um, the indoor bathrooms except for the men's room downstairs, uh, because there's a huge pipe that if your ladies haven't been in there, but, uh, there's a huge pipe running through the two sinks, so we couldn't put a countertop in there.
So it just remains sinks then or something?
Yeah, but there will be new mirrors in there, new sinks, and then each bathroom in the pavilion, upper and lower, there's going to be double sinks in each one like it is, where there is room, instead of having a garbage can out in the middle, there's going to be a garbage can underneath. We will have one sink that will be covered by a cabinet, so we can use it for storage for like toiletry stuff. Uh, and then one sink will be uncovered, uh, this way we're still secret, um, ADA compliant.
Yep.
Um, and then the outdoor bathrooms will just have new countertops and sinks and they will be sinks that are, I guess you'd say countersunk, so there's no ledges on them, so water's not collecting and stuff like that.
No mirrors?
Yes, and unbreakable mirrors in all the bathrooms.
Wonderful.
Wouldn't winter time work or spring?
Yeah, you're gonna try to do it as soon as you can here.
Oh.
It's already ready to go, we're just waiting for the okay to.
Go.
Or get her done. And that includes all of them.
Alright, so we have three different resolutions, it is entirely up to you, if you wanna take them all as one or if you want to individually approve them or deny them, it is your choice.
Hassan will make a motion to approve the renovation resolution of the.
Okay.
Cummings, 2nd.
Thank you. No, that's fine, 2025, 46, 47 and 48, motion by Hassan, second by Cummings to approve all three, roll call.
Cummings, yes.
Austin Cool, yes.
Charles Cool, yes.
Griffin, yes.
Cummings, yes.
Wyatt, yes.
Hassan, yes.
Motion carried.
If I could quickly add, does anybody have any questions on the abatement portion of the lower pavilion?
From what standpoint?
I just, if anybody, because we did find, uh, 5% asbestos in the flooring, we have to do an abatement for it.
Got it.
Longest kitchen sealed up decent enough that.
Yes, they will, when they go to do it, they will seal off, um, we will most likely have to move, um, I have to get the information from Holly Heisel from the, um, Jefferson County Health to see, because they used a walking cooler, the caterer do, and they won't be able to walk through there and it'll take about a week. So we'll, we'll have to figure out the timing there if, and so we're having, we have a meeting scheduled next Tuesday, um, at 2:00 PM with the abatement people and the concrete coating people to go over the schedules and what we consider the phases and stuff like that.
Is this just that, no offense, ugly brown flooring that's in there? So that's not even in the kitchen anyways, the kitchen.
No, 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 they'll close up, they'll still be able to use the kitchen.
No, 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 when it was the kitchen floor in the, in the floor, in the kitchen, that has nothing to do with the rest of it.
No, no, that's tile.
I thought they were two different things.
Yep. And it'll match the same stuff that we did a couple years ago with, um.
In the bathroom?
Uh, yeah, with, uh, TSR.
Do me a favor, please do some before and after pictures. Thank you. It's adorable outside.
Ready?
Hope you did. Fantastic. Alright, anything else you wanna add? Alright, motion has been carried. Alright, new business, 333 Portland Road parcel split, um, we've been kinda messing around, working on that for a bit. Jeannie, do you have any more commentary? So we updated the sand yesterday. Here, let me, well, it's in your packet, but it's right here also, even though it's not hard to read. So the lot one was never in question, lot two was the one that was, sure some of the lines, the little squirrely stuff that they had in there, that it goes back to the park because it says a part of that lot. Uh, sanitary sewer alignment, he's got a couple of things that Mitch still is going to approve. Uh, let's see, sewer alignment, but he didn't update the easement, he's waiting on a response for the width of the easement, Kate? Easements, are you familiar, you, you read all of this stuff from Mitch?
Correct, yep.
Yeah. Um, and I know one of the things he questioned was the, the roadway, but the roadway that's next to the fire department that comes down, that's, that's just to the, um, substation and stuff, so that has nothing to do with this lot and it's a completely different parcel. So the questions that, that Dave, the mapping gentleman had, didn't really necessarily apply to this particular lot. So once the easements and everything get satisfied on there, there'll be a signature page and the whole bit, then we send this off to the county.
Yeah, I was just, the, the main line sewer stayed the same spot, it's just Mitch sent all the drawings, it's sort of, we, there's some three new manholes to get it across the crack.
Could remove some of that, right?
No, we added.
Added it?
So we went across that section to the one manhole, they went to the south to another manhole, to the west to another manhole and then crossed the cracks. They moved it like 100 feet and then cleared it aside and so that was a drawing of Mitch's.
Okay, so that's gonna get done. So Mitch suggests, um, seeing that the easement for the sanitary sewer isn't currently called out, just recommend a conditional approval, that Mitch will be the one to officially sign off on everything before it gets reported. But there's just no reason for it to keep coming back here because it'll be done correctly. Unless you want to see it done correctly, that is totally your call.
Nothing will be changing on the east side of property, of course, yeah, because the sewer is a western portion.
Lot one, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, lot one is set. What he was, Dave was questioning was this little teeny tiny road here that has nothing to do with this parcel, which is just gravel. So lot two, he's just gotta fix one of these little sanitary things, these little colored ones, is that what it is? Don't touch it. There we go, make it bigger.
Yeah, so I think you've got them in there, so this is your main light coming across. Maybe just add a couple manholes down here.
Yep, that's it?
One or three pipes in there?
What's that?
One or three short pipes in there?
No, there was one main light going across, coming from the fire department and going over and then there was a stub extension, kind of a lot of, I can't get it planned.
And that was abandoned anyway, yeah.
It's there, it's non-functional.
So the manhole covers are what's still showing in there, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Busy man? If it is, cuddle. Alright, anybody have any questions?
Cummings will make a motion to approve that 333 Portland Road split parcel?
Hassan, 2nd.
He was just waiting, he was like, are we not doing anything here or is there something I should know?
Reading.
What?
Reading.
Motion by Cummings, second by Hassan, to conditionally approve? Yes.
Yes.
The map, uh, and Mitch, our city engineer, will sign off on it, do his due diligence that he needs to do, that gets sent to, um, Jefferson County. All in favor?
Aye.
Vote.
See.
Oops, same? Okay, sorry. Alright, raising of 161 Gale Road and that is the little map I have up here. Now I gotta rotate it again. So, we have an ordinance that is, um, 20, sorry, I got a lot of papers here. It is 140-15, we created that, uh, a couple years ago or so. Um, so anytime there is, uh, raising of a building, it needs to come to city council to get approved and there's conditions that kinda go with it. And Mark is here to go over this for us. Um, I've personally been to this building and it, and we all agree that it's kinda sad that we have to tear it down, but they've been trying to sell it since they closed it and they really can't see anything with it. So they are planning to remove the entire thing, level it all off, I mean, the whole, there's a whole packet of information with everything that's gonna be in there. And then we have been talking about plans for this, so I'll let you go ahead and speak.
Well, like you said, it's been empty going on two years now, we did try and entertain some offers, uh, for alternative uses. It was a low-acuity assisted living, uh, that came with the, uh, properties, the other property from the, uh, the original Watertown Hospital, which had been sold several times, but, uh, so, and we just, we couldn't get there, we worked with a commercial broker and so now it's time to, to raise it and, and see what else we can do with it and that's where we've been talking on what other options, would be a good fit for Waterloo and so we just wanna raise it at this point.
And so we have been talking about what to do with that property, so, uh, we may be looking to develop that, including the lot next to it. This is its own parcel, um, so this, this will just get leveled, I'm assuming you're reading the parking lot, though?
I, I. So when I saw this map, I, I saw a different map from our senior facilities, State Bridge, and I thought it came to here, I'd have to confirm that.
These are your drawings that you sent us, so.
Oh, that's what came with it?
This is what came in the packet, yeah.
Then that's what it would be, yeah.
Okay.
That's what it would be, yeah.
And right now, this, this right here is mostly, uh, kinda like a shared driveway for both parcels that are over there, so you can't see it, but there's more cars here and that. so you can't see it, but there's more cars here in that building here.
Yeah, you know, I.
Can you lend the other?
You wanna see the G I S?
G I S, please.
Sure, absolutely.
Need to confirm that there.
Sorry.
But.
It's a bigger, better picture.
Yeah, that that's just the exact drawing here.
Right, understood.
Yep. See how fast it's.
Patient.
Nice. There we go.
Better.
All right. So this, sorry, getting a little small. So they shared this driveway coming in, because at one time this was all part of the Watertown Hospital. So this lot is a separate lot, so this is the one we're talking about here.
Yep.
Yeah, so I'm not sure how much, I mean, until we start talking or it gets sold, I mean, I don't know if that has to necessarily get taken out, if you wanna tear it out, is this not on your plan right now?
Yeah, and that's, I mean, if it's not on the plan, then like I I did see something that came to here, you know, by the lot line, but you have what's in front of you, so I'm not in, you know.
Yeah, that's what the building permits was for.
So if if it were different, we'd have to come back then.
Yeah. He's got a, there's like a a looks like a sidewalk. So you're planning to tear this whole stretch out?
Well, we would, yeah, we would level this, make it developable.
Correct.
Developable, ready.
Okay.
And that um Robinson, the contractor, did read the ordinance, they don't have any issues with complying with everything. We've used them before, we have a similar sized building in Watertown uh that came with properties from that acquisition and use them to raise that building as well.
Right. So I did some research on Robinson and they've been in business since nineteen ninety. They've got a good rating status, no outstanding anything, they've got really, really good resume, if you will. And then they did reach out to Watertown, to the mayor of Watertown, and asked his staff, both the zoning administrator and the director of public works, and they said, uh they both reached out to the former inspector and there was no additional history and no one at city hall had any negative feedback with the company, that everything was just fine, so they didn't have any issues with it. So they did what they said they were gonna do. So the issue we have with our ordinance is, and we've we've spoke to our city engineer, I'm sorry, our city attorney, and in there it states that you need to have a irrevocable letter of credit in the amount of less than a hundred and twenty percent of the estimated project cost. And that is a very costly thing for companies to do. And we have the right to actually waive it if we choose. And I did talk to 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 Mark about this before the meeting, said a much better option is to require a letter of credit. So I talked to you about that, so would you like to give your suggestion of what, because again, Lana probably knows this too, even getting that costs more money.
Yeah, so it's gonna cost about a hundred thousand dollars to raise the building. A letter of credit to meet the ordinance would be a lot of money. Two percent plus administration fees for a long period of time. That adds to that hundred thousand dollar cost. Um even a small dollar amount, like the twenty five thousand, it's more, it's a nuisance for the bank, at least the bigger banks that where our line of credit is. So they have minimum fees that are associated with them, fees that are associated with them, fees that are associated with them, dollars. Again, when we're, I know it's small dollar compared to a hundred, spaces down, and we've got a history, we're and we have a lot of other properties right here, and we're still in the community. So I would, I would hope that we could not have that at all, and an alternative was to provide a cashier's check for the for twenty five thousand dollars, just to hold it. And I'm trying to think of how off on.
We wouldn't necessarily cash it, but it would just be ours in the event that if something went foul, that we have a recourse.
Hold it in trust, trust.
Yeah. Is that an issue?
I know.
Not matching it, so.
The preference would be to waive it altogether, but that's that's your call, but it's.
Well, even that irrevocable letter, that's not giving us money, it's just a document. So having a cashier check is something that we could actually cash if he doesn't finish. And in the ordinance, it also does have ninety days. So he also has to get this done within ninety days. If something happens, bad weather, whatever, you know, he can come to the council and say, hey, I need an extra week or something like that. But it will be being watched, I think there's a lot of things in there that, once you go to shut off water and you do certain things, other people, utilities are gonna have to come in and take a look at it. Um and then if things do go totally afoul, there are things.
Is the fire and police maybe using that before demolition?
If you give us a chance to train on it, we will go for it.
I, again, Dave said that that was asked and agreed to already.
Yeah, you brought it up to me and I have heard you mention it, and I certainly don't have a problem with it.
We we were in contact prior to this.
Okay.
So we will just get back in contact with them.
Yeah.
All right, so the way this is set up then is this is a um an approval for the uh the building permit. And based on everything we just said, if, there are definitely things already in the ordinance that are gonna protect us. Um but if you want to have a cashier's check, it's over twenty five thousand dollars as insurance that we can hang on to until this gets done or making decisions. The lawyer responded with all of it, we went back and forth with Bill a few different times. And like I said, I checked with other other business companies that did this work, and they have the same business there as well. And then we'll still have a conversation and it's not necessarily huge public knowledge, but we've met, we've talked, what can we do there, what can we build, what can we get on the tax roll, can they sell it? These, because there's really two different parcels, this one's all by itself, and this is actually a large core portion of this. I'm sorry, I take that back. This is a separate parcel, there's three, all these little few little blue lines. And so.
Cyan.
What's that?
Cyan.
I'm sorry? Cyan, correct color. So the the point is, is they've got a lot of empty land too that they're just paying, it it just sits there. So we've been talking about what can we do, whether they're gonna sell it, we can work on getting it built or so. It's not intended to be another empty lot, so we will, and you know I will stay on you. We wanna keep moving forward with this.
Yep.
Open for questions?
I don't know what that process would look. You get legal counsel involved, I mean, that's ringing up costs for.
Escrow is just actual cash that was reimbursed when you finish.
So a deposit?
Yeah.
Same, so I mean, that would be similar to the cashier's check, I don't.
Right.
Again, if there's a document that comes with it that would have to have legal review, that's the only.
I just don't know how set up we are to even deal with that right now, so.
I think I'd be more concerned if they didn't have business in Waterloo still.
Correct.
And if fire department can use it as a benefit, I feel that's a pretty good trade on personally.
Clearly, there's enough of a reason to do this, because the quality of the building is still good enough, but it just isn't marketable.
They couldn't do the apartments out of there or something like that?
No, the cost of to repurpose the way the layout is, it it's better to
Start over.
Tear it down and start over, and we've
I've had conversations.
We've talked to somebody else that the mayor introduced us to and came to the same conclusion that we did and.
Got their own bathroom, their own, you know, kitchen, everything.
There's one, but there's, there's one kitchen, there's a master kitchen, there's a
Yeah, but each room has a kitchen.
No, well, sort of, it's it's a small little dinette, if you will.
A stove top, but no.
This this is the layout.
Not a kitchen.
Yeah. Yeah, so it it is a shame, there's ten on each wing, middle section, yeah, it just, it's really not a whole lot different than um the new one over there, it's just a different layout, stacked instead of spread out.
It just pains me to see a good building for a while.
Tell me about it, there's a lot of good old cabinets and everything, so that's all gonna get repurposed, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not just getting with the door, at least there's no asbestos, there's nothing like that, there's.
So you do a bunch of dismantling and then destruction?
Say again?
You do a bunch of dismantling and then destruction, save the cabinets?
I think the habitat for humanity.
Right, yeah, that's what I was thinking of.
Yeah.
That's what Dave, our facilities had, that's what we did in Watertown.
Yep, it's a shame, but now we have the opportunity to to do something else, we talked about still trying to keep that a like a fifty five and up community, get sidewalks in there, walking, you got everything that's that's right over there, so we have the opportunity to get the land, rebuild the land, and have discussion what what we wanna do with the rest of it over there. Because that roadway that's in here is a legal roadway, but right now this is all a separate entity with them, so they take care of it, they have a maintenance contract, but if this were to get turned over into a city street and subdivision, that road is a legal road. Chet, and I personally.
It's a legal width.
Yep, yep.
Just a more or less the rural cross section.
Right. But it does have drainage and stuff, and there's just no curb gutter, and how it's been laid out, I don't think we'd ever put curb curb gutter and sidewalk in there, because just like Porter Street, you're gonna be in the driveway. No, no way to go. So yeah, so it is sad, but it's gonna go away. Any other questions or comments?
Would you be willing to do a twenty five thousand dollar cashier check?
Yeah, I mean, if that's what's decided. I'd like to see that. Be preferable than whatever.
Thomas make a motion to approve the raising permit with the twenty five thousand dollar cashier check for Shury, Shury? I guess it's.
Griffin second.
Sure.
Shury.
Shury.
Okay. None, and none, it's a refundable cashier check.
Refundable, correct.
Okay, all right, motion by Thomas, second by Griffin?
Yep.
To approve the raising with the twenty five thousand dollar cashier refundable.
Secret.
Check. Any other questions? Roll call.
Cummings, yes?
Austin Cool, yes.
Charles Cool, yes.
Griffin, yes.
Thomas, yes.
Wire, yes.
Asa, yes.
Motion carried. I'm sure Jeannie will be in touch with you and Lana, you guys can work out all the details. Thank you very much, Mark. All right, two thousand and twenty six budget compensation discussion, council may convene in a closed session. Uh per Wisconsin statute, thank the twenty five parent law pair of C. Consider employment, promotion, compensation, performance, evaluation data, and purpose of employee, which government body has jurisdictional or circumstances of responsibility. And so we will adjourn to a closed session.
Cool makes a motion to go to closed session. Wire, go ahead.
Motion by Charlie, second by Austin Cool, go into closed session, roll call.
Cummings, yes?
Austin Cool, yes.
Charles Cool, yes.
Griffin, yes.
Thomas, yes.
Wire, yes.
Asa, yes.
Motion carried, we are in closed session at seven in the morning.